It's six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order pursuant Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 20, hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording are being made of this meeting. First up on the agenda, we have public comment. All right, Kathy, what do you have? Love this building?
I do. I love this building, the high school building. When they adding on to the Lee High School building, I asked they extend my classroom so I could just stay right there overnight. They threw me out.
Get a little apartment and a little kitchen at it.
That was my thought. Oh, well.
Be mixed use then, and who knows what it would be?
A reminder, first of all, just 7:00 PM at the Z Lee Middle and High School Auditorium. And also, Election Day is Monday, May 15, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at Crossways. I said those correctly. I publicly that I totally and strongly disagree. You have the right to be rude at a meeting. Roberts Rules of Order. I believe that we have a right to disagree, and I after all, we are not an anarchy. We are
Thank you. Agreed. But that's what they've laid down for law, so whatever they I don't know if anyone has seen it, but
I haven't read the decision. They they held that the expulsion of a person was improper. Was that what the court's ruling was? There wasn't sufficient ground to
Yeah.
They were just rude and not disruptive enough or something like that?
I think they have to be physically a threat, but verbally, they can say anything and everything, including vulgarity. So. Go ahead, Peg.
No, I was going to say, I think we should always be civil, even though Supreme Court ruling is what it is. And I think from the articles I've read about it, certain things, this was in the Berkshire article two months ago, but they just recently did this article on Saturday, that if you're in charge of the meeting, you're supposed to say certain things to the people that, in my mind, are being uncivil, if I could use that term. And you encourage people, but you can't tell them at the beginning. It's a very, very interesting decision. I have always felt you have the right to disagree, but it should be on an issue and not naming people. And I guess now you can do that. And I'm troubled, but I am personally, personally, I'm not speaking for the board. I am personally very troubled by it. I think many times we have issues and we disagree, and that, to me, is okay.
Stability.
Stability with civil discourse, to me. But again, you can say, I guess, anything you want, but it is. I agree with you, Kathy, and everybody, that it is somewhat you probably should look that up to find out exactly what you should say and how it should be done, because otherwise
Starting the public comment segment of the meeting versus the regular
Right.
Differentiating
No, not at all.
No.
If there's a public hearing and they're speaking, they can say anything they want.
Right.
Brennan Barrett.
I know. Oh, yes. Part of it was, if you remember, if you read it, you have to be tough skinned when you get these jobs, or they're not jobs, but the volunteer jobs that and I think that's true. Anybody that even is on a board that volunteers has to be pretty tough skinned at times, because there are issues that do come up. And it was a very, to me, and I was just, the ACLU, I guess, was thrilled about it. I personally am not. I'm just speaking as a person, though. I've always felt you should the opportunity to disagree on issues. And as long as it's done fine, I have no problem with that. I don't like, I don't know what they're gonna do. I know I'm speaking too much on this, but about slander. If you mention something about someone, I just don't know. Sure, you have the right of free speech, but I guess I'm just wondering how that works. And I know myself, I used to feel you have the right of free speech, but you don't yell fire. I mean, this was the old ruling under home. You don't yell fire in a theater and have everybody running out and trampling people. I mean, two months ago, when I read it, I was very concerned, and I'm now even more concerned. But again, that's my view. Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I just think there's a distinction to be made between what a person can say without being ejected by the chair of a meeting
There is.
and what a person can say that could get them in trouble with defamation later in a lawsuit. Those are two different issues. And we are public officials by virtue of our office. And I believe that the old 1960s era New York Times v. Sullivan standard applies to us, which is that if we claim, if we sue somebody for defamation or something that they said against us that was hurtful and untrue, we have to carry an additional burden beyond that of a private plaintiff. We have to show that the statement was made with actual malice, not just sloppiness, but intent to harm. That's the new so-called New York Times v. Sullivan standard. And the Supreme Court is not sure that it likes that anymore, but it's still the law, as far as I know. And so we have to have thick skin in both kinds of circumstances.
The other thing is, sometimes it's expensive to hire a lawyer and to do these things. If someone does or says something against you, I really have mixed feelings on this, and it saddens me. I just wish we could all, I know I'm naive, but get along, even if we disagree. Thank you.
I'm curious about if that extends the heckling from the crowd when you do have the floor?
Well, you know, I need to read the decision, but I don't think it's just, you know, free for all.
No.
I mean, I think that if somebody is speaking without being recognized and they persist in doing that, I believe that they can still be ejected. They need to be recognized by the moderator of the town meeting before they can speak.
Right. I think you're right on that, Peter, because it did say they did not encourage things to get disorderly. And that's when sometimes problems in different situations.
But if they're recognized and they call you a son of a gun, that's not reason for kicking them out.
I don't think so. I might be wrong. I might be wrong, but I don't
No, Peter's correct. They can call you every name in the book within their time limit. And having a time limit is still legal, right?
Yeah, you can limit the time. You just can't stop somebody from speaking their free mind.
That's it. Yeah.
Anyways, thanks.
Public comment is a big issue, seems to be a big issue right now.
That's interesting.
Okay.
I have a public comment.
We have online here, we have Matt, Matt and Matt today, so.
I recognize
Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to report that I had contact from a Lee resident who was complaining about the Starbucks sign on Musatonic Street. And this person said that, and I didn't believe her at first, she said that Starbucks has three building signs. And I said, no, no, they had two and they had to take one down. And she looked at me like, you gotta, you gotta get more connected, buddy. I went around today, and yes, indeed, they have three signs. They have letters Starbucks on the front face of the building. They have larger, apparently, letter Starbucks on the rear face of the building, facing the parking lot, and they have a Starbucks green circle on the Gable Inn facing north. And I would ask that zoning administrator report back to the planning board at a future meeting about whether this requires action.
I can speak to that if you want.
Go ahead, Matt.
So the plan that I had was approved prior to Starbucks actually doing any of this work. And the signs that are on it were approved. There was one sign that was asked to be removed, and it was, I believe it was a roof sign, if I remember right. But the other signs were all approved and okayed, so I let it go through because it had gone through the proper channels.
Matt, this is Peter. I'm pretty sure that our bylaw says that a business in that zone is entitled to one building sign and one freestanding sign unless it's on a corner, and then it is entitled to two building signs, one facing each traffic, each kind of traffic. I don't know how three building signs could have been approved, and in fact, I don't believe they were. I would ask you to check that again, because I do remember that case, and I remember there being two signs and hearing it again. I agree with your description about the roof sign being brought up at a meeting, and the town asked it to be removed, and I'm glad to hear that it was. But I don't remember before Saturday, when this person spoke to me, ever hearing that three signs were somehow approved on any case in town.
Like I said, I'm happy to relook at it if you would like me to. We did relook at this because a complaint came up about that sign that you're talking about that faces back toward Maple Street was illuminated. And it was illuminated throughout the evening and through the night when it wasn't open. So I'd been in contact with them a number of times to have that sign at least, you know, turned off, so that it wasn't shining up the hill at night. So when they shut down, they had to turn that sign off. And at that time, you know, I looked at this, and it really, you know, it was part of the package that was approved initially. So like I said, I'll look at it again if that's what you'd like me to do. But, you know, I'm not one that's gonna argue with the board when they say that something's okay.
About two different things here. I mean, there's approved site plan, site plan approval through the planning board, and then there's gonna be a follow-up application to the Z E O for a sign.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's two different
I can't imagine that we missed it, Buck.
Yeah. Sorry, Buck.
No, please, if Matt could pull that permit again and look and take a look, and maybe we missed it, I just can't imagine us
Was the zoning board involved at all, Matt?
We were still
No, we were doing it.
No, at the time, the planning board was the authority on this.
The planning board approved it. So Matt should have the permit that says what we approved, and maybe he can share that with us. Buck, can you get on permit eye, Buck, and look, and not that it's on the agenda tonight, but
Next time is fine.
Yeah, we'll check it out next time.
Yeah. It wasn't about the time was.
That's just what happened. Yes.
That's right.
Then you have, when the planning board was authorized and signing off on
Yes.
Right.
We had a signed permit.
Right.
So that would have been another approach to the planning board prerequisite to getting the actual signed permit. So, I mean
Somewhere in there. Right.
Yeah.
So when the signed permit either there isn't, it isn't there, or we missed it.
Well, let's just find out what the facts are.
Let's find out, then we'll go from there. At this point, we're gonna begin discussion of our zoning amendments, and I'm gonna try something here. I'm gonna try to become the host, and then I'll share my screen. Oh, yeah, go. I missed that. Sorry, Peter.
It's okay. There's not much to report. We haven't had a meeting since the last planning board meeting. I did give people homework, though. I asked them to, by today, give me one to five goals that they would like included in the master plan, broad goals. And I've had, I think, five people so far of the 11 have submitted something. A couple of them couldn't limit themselves to five, so they had like, you know, number 4A and 4B, that kind of thing. But it's okay. We'll survive. And we're gonna meet next Monday.
There we go, Matt. How's that? Oh, no. Well
The courtroom
I can hear you.
The courtroom
There we go.
The courtroom The courtroom wanted, we can hear you, but the courtroom one is muted. I just want to let you know that.
Yeah.
But we can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Are we okay with that? Okay. All right. But I think the whole meeting is being recorded. Yeah.
It is. I don't see it up there as a as a window, but just to let you know.
Yeah, you're right. I don't, well
But it's working.
Wait a minute. Oh, you know what? I think when I changed host, I made myself host, and I think we canceled the courtroom out.
I think you did.
Yeah.
It's not on there anymore.
No, it's not. Well, sort of. There we go. Are we there now, Matt? Not yet. Hold on.
I think what's gonna happen is if you go back to change it over
Yep.
But that shouldn't have mattered. That shouldn't have mattered. You changing it to yourself as the host, I don't think.
No, we've done that before. And I didn't touch anything else.
Because at first it was muted. The courtroom was muted. I thought maybe you accidentally closed it out, but
Mm-hmm. Right, but we're not recording anymore. I don't think nothing's here, Beth. Because I don't have any participants or anything.
Can we just skip the laptop and just do papers?
Yeah. I don't know why I lost that. Not linked to the meeting, but I'm on the meeting here still. And it's only showing me, Matt, and Matt. It's not showing Town Hall as a participant. And I don't want to proceed any further without that. I think we might or sign that back into the meeting.
I think that's what you'd have to do, is sign back into the the meeting as if you were starting it over.
Right. No, not yet. Not yet. They are.
I think we should blame Matt Comer.
Why not?
Hey, I'll take it.
No, we can't. No, we don't have, the meeting's not being recorded, like it was said, it was like we introduced that it was gonna be. I don't think we're here, Beth. I don't think it's in here. Just take a look. Matt, you're not seeing the courtroom, are you?
No, not seeing it.
So I don't think this is signed into the meeting anymore.
What if we, Buck, what if we all got off?
Reboot this. End meeting? Yeah, I think by rejoining the meeting. Beth's gonna try to rejoin the meeting.
Okay.
Well in the current world, I just don't dare continue the meeting.
Oh, no, it's something we needed to do anyhow.
Yeah.
So good.
Oh, look, no, I got you in the wait, the courtroom's in the waiting room in Matt.
There you go.
Hello?
Yeah, you might have an echo, Buck. You're gonna have to, you're probably gonna have to mute yourself. There you go. Now, turn the video, turn the video on for the courtroom. There you go. Perfect. Good work.
Don't know what I did, but there I'll show you my inbox. There's that one.
You might want to mention we had a technical glitch.
There was nobody else in the waiting room or anywhere
for anybody who tunes into the recording.
Yeah, anybody
We've been off and on here with technical difficulties for a few minutes. Is this a new recording loop, or really, I gotta start everything over again?
There we go.
Must have been, must have been an accidental closeout or something.
I don't know.
But you're good now.
Yeah, I got that. Hold on.
Is your credit card number coming up?
It probably will be. Look at my Lee Hart. Oh, look at that bottom one.
Oh, boy.
It's the big evil organization.
That could be nicer. No offense, but
Lost this one.
The second, second
Yeah. There we go.
Good, good. There we go.
Bounce my screens again. Okay, accessory dwelling units. Here we go.
Yes. Yes, Buck.
It's a facilitating organization on that matter.
I know. We're not gonna, we're not gonna go there.
They have never made a policy, an opinion or anything. They merely assist the committee. That's because there's a lot of misinformation out there.
Well, I know that.
Yeah. Okay, ADUs. Here we go. We're just about through this, right? Weren't we through this?
Yeah, I thought we were.
I did, too.
I thought we were done.
Well, there were a couple of things that I changed.
What did you change, Peter?
I think this wasn't the one with the single family, was it? Through it, and I'll see if I
This isn't too long.
No, this was single and two-family where the garbage containers that we had to change. We had this one pretty good.
I thought we did, too.
And I thought Gordon had stuff to say, but
There were two or three minor adjustments to it. I think I made them like the day after the last meeting. So I just don't remember.
And Matt and Matt, join in here. We're gonna stay with the gross floor area as 400 and 800.
Okay. Yep.
Or do we want to bump it to 1,000?
No, didn't we agree that 800 was
I think we bumped it the other way.
I think we might. I keep trying for 1,000. Yeah. I think we're good with 800?
Okay. I mean, I'm open to 800 or 1,000. I mean, I'm open, to be honest with you. So
For reference, the most I've ever seen is 900.
Okay. Stay where we are then. Okay.
Well, maybe that's a, maybe that's a middle ground. We're saying 800 and 1,000.
Oh, to 900?
900, if that's okay. Nine hundred, if that's okay.
Nine hundred, Peter. We good with that, Dave?
Yeah, yeah.
Nine.
Eight fifty's comfortable too, I'm sorry.
Nine hundred, okay.
Nine hundred.
Peter, you okay with that? Nine hundred?
Yeah, it's by consensus, everybody agrees apparently, right?
Yeah.
I'm good with it, yep. You wanna do a vote, or are you, we good with it?
On the, I think we'll be okay with this, we haven't had a public hearing yet.
Yep, okay, yeah.
Are we ready to put this one to bed?
So to bed means go to public hearing?
Um, not yet. We'll, we'll, we'll leave it, and then we'll call a public hearing when we're sure when. We're gonna get, uh.
Okay.
Town meetings, you gotta be within six months of that window.
So, I will do another draft changing eight hundred to nine hundred, if you will promise me that this will not be on the next agenda.
It will not.
I like that, Peter.
I think we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have a meeting in the fall, possibly.
Yeah, I, I'm hearing that, but if we have it, you know, I'd rather.
Oh, definitely.
Did it now, and it ends up being in late November, then we're out of that. Uh, six month window.
Yeah, nope, I agree, we'll just wait until we know we're gonna have a meeting.
Well, probably, I mean. I think if we. Well, let, let's see, make sure we're gonna have one, yeah, we, we could probably do it for September.
Well, we might have to make a note in the minutes, we only changed one word on this and it's done. So we don't look at it again.
We don't look at it good, until, until Gordon comes in, then we're gonna have to look at it again.
Okay.
Oh, he texted you?
He's not coming. I take it.
Means we're not done with it. But it'll be, it won't be on the agenda again. Will be, if he wants to talk during public comment, he can. Yes, he was. Yep. Yeah.
Right.
Okay, moving on, I wouldn't mind being out of here early tonight, folks. Let's move right on.
Okay.
Uh, short term dwelling, short term rentals.
Well, I think the big issue here is, do we want this to be a zoning regulation or a non-zoning regulation? The biggest question.
My, you know, my thought to, it's a use. And uses are in. Zoning. Mostly, that, that's what, that's why I would say keep it in planning board.
Okay.
But I do think the registration could go through select board. Would ma, would. Keep it out of the town clerks a little bit.
You know, I, I don't wanna cause trouble here in Town Hall, but. As a lawyer. You know, the word clerk has a sacred meaning, you file everything with the clerk of the court. And I think the town clerk is maybe not a sacred office, but, um, it's the place where important things get filed. And, um. Administrative support person for the selectmen. Isn't an office, it's just the person who has a job. But she's not an official of the town, the way the town clerk is. Town clerks are elected, and they have statutory duties, and so.
Are they elected?
I, I thought they were appointed.
I thought they were too, Peter.
Clerk is appointed.
I didn't think she was elected, she was appointed. I mean, who?
That weakens my argument a little bit, I guess.
Is there any, Beth, is there any other registration that's done through the select board? Do you know?
Liquor licenses.
Liquor license, okay, thanks, Matt.
Underground storage licenses.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll. I'll yield.
So it wouldn't be.
I mean, it's not, it's not the first time this is being done, so, apparently we've broken that rule many, many times, so. Let's go back to a question here, is this a zoning matter, or it's just a, a town bylaw matter? Yeah. I think Buck was saying he wants it to stay zoning, I don't.
But I'm, I'm open, I'm open to a discussion on that.
Could, somebody, could you explain? It, cause the last time it was corporate bylaw, or, uh, there were two terms.
Yeah, well.
And I wasn't corporate or zoning, so I, I, I was just curious. I'm not really familiar, I mean, I know what zoning is, cause I'm here. But, a corporate.
I'll explain.
Thank you, Peter.
So if it's a zoning bylaw. It comes with enforcement mechanism, Matt Comer is the enforcement officer.
Yeah.
There are statutory penalties in the zoning statute for violation of zoning bylaw.
Right.
There's enforcement procedures that Matt Comer has to follow. He has a choice of options as to whether to initiate an enforcement. Administratively or in district court. I don't know, Matt Comer, you never do the district court one, do you?
Uh, we try to avoid that honestly, because, A, you know, the, we have to bring, I have to go bring town council in for that, because. The last time I tried to go to, to court without town council, I pretty much got thrown out of there and said, bring town council. So, you know, it's, there's a monetary thing to that. Um, and it's not, that slows the process way down, it, it, it has to be a last resort, I guess is my point.
Okay, that, that makes a lot of sense, that's, that's kind of in the weeds, but the, the point peg for here is. There's an established enforcement mechanism that people know how to work. How to use it. And. The way this is drafted, it's drafted in that fashion, so that it is a zoning bylaw. And moreover, there's an additional enforcement mechanism of revocation.
Right.
In addition to all the other.
Okay.
Zoning regulation enforcement mechanisms, okay? Now, if we go the other way. It becomes a general administrative code provision of the town, the town has, like all towns in Massachusetts. They have home rule authority, and the towns can. Enact ordinances, making things, prohibiting things, and, and imposing penalties. I know far less about how that gets enforced, I almo, I know almost nothing about how that would get enforced. But it, it would, if we choose that method, I think we would have to say more than we say here, I would think we would have to. Replicate something like. The zoning enforcement mechanism, say who does it, how it's done, what the penalties are. None of that is in here, because we're relying on the zoning side of the draft.
Okay.
Procedure for adopting a general regulation is different than the procedure for adopting zoning. For zoning, we have to, we have to vote it. Favorable to the town, the town has to enact it by two thirds. For a general regulation, I don't know what the, what the process is, I think the selectmen initiated, but whether they require a two thirds vote, I don't know.
Sure. Uh, Matt Comer, do you have input on that one, this one either way?
No, like I said, the zoning, the zoning part of it, like Peter said, is, you know, there, you can go through kind of a. You know, cease and desist, and then it can, they can be financially fined, um. You know, and then as a, kind of a last resort, we can bring them to district court, but. You know, like I said, that, that gets pretty muddy, I've, I've, my personal experience, it may not be the way it goes all the time, but my personal experience, and with some people I've talked to. You know, the, the court side really against us, because it, they don't want a town being a bully, basically, so. It. You know, after a while, they totally signed with us, because it becomes very apparent, this one is not working with us, but initially, it's very difficult to, to get anything really done. Until you've gone, at least, I, the last time I went to district court, I went five times. Um, over a course of a year, so.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Matt Carlino? You're muted.
Thanks, Buck, I was just gonna, uh, mention that, um. I think some people in the past for, for permits, special permits. Have gone to the town clerk and, and filed with the town clerk, you know, and got a, a received stamp and. Started the clock, you know, so. I just wanna mention that.
That, right, that's how our, our site plan and our special permits work.
Sometimes, some, some applicants come right to us. And just kinda do it that way, but some people just don't fool around, go in, get the clock going, and. We, we've got to make sure we pay attention on our end.
Yeah, um.
I think it all, might also be worth mentioning, I think in Great Barrington, I think it's not a zoning bylaw.
No, it's correct, it's a town bylaw, general bylaw.
And I think in North Adams, they just did it both ways, but I just never understood. The difference, but now I do, and I thank you all for it.
Otis is putting theirs, I believe, in zoning. Taland is doing. Yeah, well, Otis is doing a very strict one there, and I believe Taland has one. Out that way, see, they're all around the reservoir, so that's why they're.
Yeah. You know, the only. The only reason I can think to not do it under zoning is if it feels more like a. Selectmen-y kinda thing than like a planning board kinda thing, you know, is it. There's, there's money coming in from these people to the town, there's. Equities as between motels and these people, there's equities as between. Long-term and short-term rental, there's housing market issues, you know, how do you promote or, or withdraw from housing? So, in, in a lot of those ways, it feels to me like it's sort of a general government judgment, more than, more than ours, but. I, I could, I think the easier thing is to just go with the draft we have, and. If, if we had any opposition from the selectmen on it, if we thought they were gonna come up with a different idea. Or oppose us strongly on some part of it, I would. Feel differently, but if, if we don't know of anything like that, I guess we might as well just go, my view is, just go forward with what we got. There's still kind of parallels to the B and B concept, right?
Yes, yeah, we have that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's a planning board, yeah. Yep.
Right.
Kind of way.
Yeah.
I think when we first thought about that, this is kind of the way we envisioned it. Knowing that.
Okay.
And, and we were tasked with doing it, it wasn't select board writing a new town bylaw, so. Okay. Yep.
So maybe that's, maybe that's when we start drawing the line, will be then. Were any other issues, uh, was there anything about the trash or the? Rental, sub rentals, you know?
We talked about, well, we changed the fee to a hundred.
Yeah, that's right.
Little more. And we're gonna, I guess we're gonna have to come up with some sort of. Template for a registration.
Yeah, you know, um. That's another angle on this, is that. It's not entirely clear in my mind how much administrative burden this is gonna be on people in Town Hall. It could be very little to just. Keep a registration file. But if we have to go out and start enforcing, you know. Somebody's property agent was two and a half hours instead of two hours showing up when the toilet got plugged. Um, you know, there's gonna be costs for the zoning enforcement officer. And, um. I guess, you know, I don't, it's up to Matt to, to squeal about that or protest if he wants to. Whether that's, he, uh, he'll consider that a significant extension of his duties and responsibilities. But, you know, it could be. It could be a significant amount of work to enforce these regulations, depending on how seriously the owners treat them. So there's gonna be an application, it's gotta be completed by the applicant.
Yeah.
Number one.
Yeah.
You should have to certify, sign and certify that it's correct. And that there's fire extinguishers and all that kind of stuff, yeah. No, I know, but I, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking that the, the open-ended part of it is the later enforcement of the. Regulations against. What's supposed to be happening in these.
There's a complaint.
Yeah. Yeah.
What do you think, Matt?
Can I add, oh yeah, there you go, um, I was just gonna say that, one of the, one of the. I guess I just ask you to keep in mind that when you get to the point of enforcement. That if this is something that is A, approved, or B, by right, there's not really gonna be anything. I can do to enforce it. If that makes sense.
You, you cut out there for a bit, could you repeat that?
Yeah, I was, I was saying that if, basically, I, what I'd want you to keep in mind as you're going through this process, is that when it gets to the enforcement end that you're alluding to. If, if this is a. A special permit type thing, and they have a special permit to do it. Or it's a by right type thing, and they have the right to do it, just generally. There's not a whole lot you can do as far as enforcement's concerned, because they have the right to do that, or they gained permission to do it. Um, so I think, you know, that you're gonna have to have something in there that's pretty specific, that says, well, these events can, are, you know, not allowed. Even with by right use or by, by special permit. So that I have something to enforce.
Can you see the screen that Buck has got up, Matt?
Which, where would you like?
I can see the courtroom.
Page three. Page three of the STR.
That enforcement, Peter?
Yeah, regu, well, regulations. So this would be.
Registration.
Before registration, yeah.
Regulations, okay.
I don't, can you see, can you read the screen, Matt?
No, I just, I just have the, oh, let me, give me one second here.
You then, there's, uh, there's ten, twelve. Twelve paragraphs in this thing. And, uh, each of these potentially could be a complaint. That would be referred, referred to you, and it wouldn't be a use, a zoning use thing, the way you were describing, this is why I'm a little. Reluctant to make this a zoning regulation, cause. It falls into all this zoning stuff about, you know, non-conforming uses and variances, and none of this applies, this is a. This is a reg, a new registration program. With regulations that apply to the registrants. And it would be located, as we say, at the moment, at least, it would be located in the zoning regulations of the town. But there's a, a one point two pages of regulations of things that. People are expected to do if they offer short-term rentals, and any of those things. At least, I don't, I can't think of an exception at the moment, any of those could produce an enforcement action. Or a complaint that would require you to enforce it. If it's in zoning. So I, I, maybe, maybe you need to think about it, we need to bring it up again at the next meeting, but. I'm trying to anticipate how much of a burden that would be on you, Matt Comer.
Well, it's, it's the same as any other zoning complaint, really. You know what I mean, I can get a zoning complaint for a litany of things, this would be one more of those things, it just depends on how, I'm sure there's gonna be growing pains with it.
Would these regulations be enforceable?
It's, it, some of them, yeah, um. You know, so, some of them's not, some of them really don't fall under me, like the Board of Health stuff with the Title V stuff, that's really. That's really gonna fall on Triton.
Yeah, that's an exception, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, um. You know, but there's, there's definitely some that will fall on, that will absolutely fall under, under me, it's just. A matter of. I, I guess my, my big thing is I like to have. Actual language that I can point to, because I don't enter fights that I can't win, you know what I'm saying, so. When somebody says, well, where does it say that, I wanna be able to say, right there. That type of thing, you know what I mean?
Okay.
So, that was just something that I wanted to bring up, just to say, hey, you know, just keep, bear this in mind, because this is the, this is the world I live in, and it's. You know, when people are bringing up things and it's abstracted, and it's kind of my interpretation versus somebody else's, it's extremely hard to, and it's very hard to enforce.
That's, uh, you're, you're sounding like, um, Gordon here, and, and he went right through this all step by step with us. And, but I don't know if he was, um.
Yeah, I think, I, I think it's a little more complicated than just saying, than I was saying a few minutes ago, expecting Matt to enforce all this, I mean. The first one, the size of a gathering, right, well, he's not, he, Matt doesn't work twenty-four seven. If there's, you know, somebody's, if somebody's got a complaint, there's three hundred people on an SDR, it's the police that are gonna have to answer that, right?
Point, too. It's a wedding, and it's at the house, and there were people, I mean, people.
Right.
These things do happen.
It also has to go to somebody, so it's substantiated, and not an angry neighbor.
So maybe, well, yeah, but what if they call the police and say. Geez, there's twenty-five people on my lawn sleeping, what's going on here, I mean, I'm just. Pardon me? There'd be a police report, and hopefully.
So I think most of these things are, are aiming at. Revoking the registration.
Yes.
Eventually.
Yes.
You know, not necessarily immediate enforcement, but, you know, somebody who keeps poor records or who leases and has, you know, big parties from the tenants that are bothering the neighbors repetitively, they're going to face a revocation proceeding.
And that's.
That's at the end of the bylaw.
End of the bylaw.
And honestly, once that, once that's revoked, then, then there is a zoning violation, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, they won't, if they, if they continue to do short-term rentals, yeah, that would be a zoning violation.
Right.
I mean, is there, should we put language in that enforcement that the select board after a hearing?
It does say that.
Oh, yes, duh.
Page five.
Jeez, let's not skim over it. Yep, got it. Yep.
Three or more violations within twelve-month period.
Yeah.
So, so if, if we ever got to that in a case against a short-term tenant, a short-term landlord, rather, probably Matt's evidence would be chief, you know, for the plaintiff, for the prosecution. He would bring things to the selectmen and say, yeah, we had a violation of chapter of, you know, paragraph three, and a violation a week later, paragraph five, violation a week later, paragraph seven, and that's three, and I recommend revocations, uh, selectmen, and then they vote to revoke. And then the STRs have to stop at that property.
That sound like a legal, uh, uh, legal and good process for you, Matt?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that sounds good. If, you know, if they've gone through a process where it's actually been revoked for whatever, you know, multiple infractions or whatnot, then, you know, you, maybe you add a four, a number four here that says, you know, short-term rentals, or in the, in the beginning, I might say it in the beginning, actually, short-term rentals are only allowed by, you know, special permit or, or this registration system, but.
Registry.
Yeah, through, through the registration system, and, you know, if, if it, and it's only allowed through the registration system, so without a valid registration, it's a zoning violation.
I think we, I think we said they shall register.
Okay.
Yeah. But I would just say maybe put in something, somewhere in the language that just specifically states that it's a zoning violation without a, a, a current registration. Same as driving your car.
Yep. Yeah. Is that in there, Peter?
Not explicitly, but I think he's right.
Yep. They shall register with the town before conducting business as an STR? Or before?
It does say that, but it, it does say in, on page four, at least I hope it says it. Page four, G1.
Yeah, registration.
Each STR landlord shall register each STR unit. But it doesn't really say if your registration came in, it's been revoked, and you're now offering, still offering STRs, what happens? And I think that Matt is right in pointing out that we could be more explicit about that, that that is a zoning violation.
Okay.
Is that right, Matt? Did I read you right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so I'll do another draft of that one. Can we put it to rest for a couple of months with that?
Yeah, I forgot to relinquish my chairmanship during this, but.
Oh.
Sorry. Then I, I was speaking as a citizen, not as chair.
Right.
All right, so. Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm functioning as chair.
You're functioning as chair. Mr. Chair, um, in the fee shall be a hundred dollars. Is that per landlord or per rental? Annual registration fee shall be a hundred dollars.
Per unit. Well, you're only allowed one per lot.
I don't think so. No, that's ADUs.
That's right, ADUs, yeah.
Yeah. No. Because we did the, the rooms. If you had, if you had three, three rooms, that would actually be three rentals. Three separate rentals is why we didn't do that. Yeah.
Let me clarify. It should be a hundred dollars for every.
That's fine.
Every rental.
I think that's. Yeah.
You rent, if you rent three rooms separately, then it's three.
Three hundred dollars. Okay, I was just clarifying that.
Clarification, though, yeah.
I think, I think that's how it reads. The annual rate, because an STR shall be rented, and it doesn't say, yeah, that's how. And you, if you look at, each landlord shall register each STR unit with the selectmen, then you go down. Registration of STRs shall expire, a hundred dollars. Okay, so that's what that is. All right, so are we putting this one to bed? Um, at one change of language?
Yeah, so.
I think you should, I mean, I don't know if you want to just look at it one final time, or just say, this is, you know.
I'm sorry, I'm not even chair. Peter, what do you?
Here's what.
Jesus.
We have reached consensus, subject to objection, that a new draft will be produced with the changes, two changes on page five, a hundred dollars per rental, and then also adding a statement at the end about offering a short-term rental without a registration is a zoning violation. With those two changes, I think we've reached consensus that we can approve this conditionally and bring it up next time when it's time to warn it for public hearing and take it off the agenda in the meantime. Is there any objection to that?
With revised data.
A new revised data.
I'm good.
So by consensus without a vote.
Buck, you, you muted, you muted the court meeting again.
Yeah, it, it bumped, it bumped us off. Are, are we back again?
There you go.
Did you hear my summary, Matt?
Yeah, pretty much, a little bit.
There were only two changes. We were gonna swear it says a hundred dollar fee, it'll be a hundred dollar per rental. We had the words per rental, and then adding a sentence at the end that says, if you offer a short-term rental without registration, that's a zoning violation. And I'm gonna change the date on the, on the header, and I'll circulate it.
Perfect.
I don't know if you can hear me, but the courtroom, uh, meeting got booted off again.
You are doing good for us, as usual. You are.
Ready to go on the next one?
Yeah, I'm trying to change the host, but.
This sure has slowed us down tonight.
Yeah, it does. It'd be a way, too, to share content from this screen. Yeah, I can't seem to.
You shut your own laptop, Dan?
I can try that. I'm afraid.
Leave the meeting for your laptop.
I think it's gonna end the meeting, because this is the host right now.
Oh.
Are you the host right now, Buck?
So we'll call you back, we'll, we'll dial in again. That will have to.
Well, we'll, we'll see if it kicks it off again. Maybe we'll try to get through this. Did we, Matt, did, did you hear all of Peter's?
Yeah, I got, yeah, I got cut, cut off right at the end, so we're good.
And I, I'd like to acknowledge, too, that I abstained from that consensus. Okay?
Not because you disagree.
Not because I disagree, just abstaining, yes. And turn the chair back to me?
Yes.
All right, um, and I'll take the chair back. Um, zoning amendments for cannabis, uh, if anybody, last selectman's meeting, they put marijuana bylaw on their agenda. I happened to notice it. We were not contacted by them for input, but I took it upon myself last minute to go in and, if there were any questions, talk to them about it, and just try to explain where we were coming from when we wrote it. And any questions? The big thing is the one on 102, the smell. I made them aware that there's already provisions in there that the, for violations against the odor. But one of the select board members is adamant that we revisit and limit the number of licenses. I'm not sure if that's the way to go.
Just for clarity, how many licenses are there? How many out, and how many are actually activated right now?
There's fourteen allowed for general, plus two retail.
Non-retail.
Or non-retail. There's two retails allowed, fourteen general. Now, and you have to remember, there's a total of ten different licenses available from the state of Massachusetts. Okay, that you could have, and our, like I explained to them, our train, our line of thinking was that, looking at those licenses, one business could have almost five to seven licenses themselves. So that would, you know, in the thought of competition and, and some of the places we have around, you know, we said, okay, three, four businesses, and so we came up with fourteen. The, the concern with the smell, if you had two businesses, you could have that problem.
Well, that's exactly right.
Yeah.
I agree.
So there are fourteen.
What about?
Or there's fourteen includes the two.
Plus two, sixteen total.
Sixteen.
Sixteen total.
And there's only, there's only six out there right now. There's only six in, there's only six total in use.
They're, they're, that's permitted, right? Not, they're not all in use, are they, Matt?
Uh, six permitted. That's all, yeah, six permitted. I, I can't say that they're all in use.
I think 102 has a, a grow and a manufacturing license. There's two, yeah.
Okay, what about the, used to be Aron Murray? That was supposed to be, is that included in?
They.
Numbers?
No, that, I think that brought it to eight, but they've, theirs has expired, and it's not going to be renewed.
Okay, and then the one in the industrial part.
That's one of them.
Is that, are they growing there?
No.
No.
They haven't even built the building yet, I don't think.
There was one at Columbia Mill, right?
Yeah, that never.
That's expired.
That's expired.
Yeah, same with Greylock, yep. But, um.
Columbia and Greylock?
Oh, just Greylock. Uh, Columbia at one time was talking about a test site, a lab site, but that was just talk.
That permit is dead.
Yep.
So the, so the select board was saying, basically, there, there's six, there's, there's ten licenses that we have not, that we have on the table, and is now the time to, to maybe look at limiting the licenses. And that com, they wanted, you know, maybe there's a conversation there that should be had. I personally think, um, I mean, that is separate from, I think, the 102 smell issue that is what brought the conversation up. I believe that's an enforcement issue. We have it in our bylaws, and, um, they're working with them. If they don't come through with, uh, remediation on that to satisfy the smell, then they should be, you know, enforcement should come down on them as needed, last resort, but.
How long do they have to say correct?
Thirty.
Do you?
I think it's thirty days.
Once we've been, once they're formally notified of a violation, they have thirty days to correct, but they've not yet been formally notified.
It's just a cooperative discussion.
They're being, they're having a discussion.
I went out there once, and I couldn't smell anything, but it was winter time, and I drove through the parking lot, and I don't know, maybe the wind was blowing a different way, or maybe it was between crops or something. I didn't smell anything, but I do hear a lot of accounts from people repeatedly that they smell bad smells there. Is that really the only thing that's, let me, let me just finish, Peg, okay?
Oh, sure, of course.
Um, is that the only reason that we're talking about reducing the number of licenses?
Yep.
Because there's one place that smells?
Yep.
You know, I sort of remember that case, and I remember a lot of discussion about charcoal filters with the, the owner or the proponent.
We also talked about, there was a problem, I believe in New Hampshire with the same problem. They had charcoal filters, and the smell was getting through them, and they added another filter to it that.
These guys did, or New Hampshire?
No, New Hampshire.
Well, I think I, I sort of half remembered that our guys said they were going to add filters too at some point. So, is it, is this just they can't do it? I mean, it, it, you just can't filter it out? Is that what the problem is? It's not a technical problem, it's just an impossibility?
There's engineering solution to it. It's just, there's nothing to look into, add filtration to it?
I, I believe so, and I don't, I don't think they, I don't know.
They, they gave them till the end of June. They, they gave them time to look into maybe some reengineering and gave them to the end of June, so to see what they came up with. As of now, I don't think they've came, come up with anything.
That's the enforcement side of this. The only thing we're left is there's a number issue, right?
That's right, that's right. Originally, this is supposed to be a cash cow for the town. Numbers have not been very clear of just what's going on with funds that are turned over from each location through taxes or whatever to town coffers. Uh, when we, they first opened on whose tonic straight? Uh, we did know that. Uh, Great Barrington was very clear with what they were donating to the town, but it's been very quiet. And myself, I've asked. I just don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot. It's something that can make us money because of a smell that we should be able to take care of with enforcement.
Exactly. It, it is. I remember hearing numbers, like you say, they were in the newspaper more than they were produced by.
Long time.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Exactly, and a long time.
I'm sorry, Peg, what do you got?
No, that's okay. No, that's okay. Okay, they got to the end of June to come up with something. Or will we know anything, or will the, who's negotiating the select?
Select board's talking.
All right, so then, would we know at the end of June if they came up with something or not?
I'm sure we'll hear about it, yes.
Okay, so.
But that's somebody, and, and I informed them also, and they know the, how they need to initiate a complaint system. Has to be written, has to be.
The people that.
That are complaining, yes.
Then the clock starts for thirty days for remedy.
Okay.
And they, they, I mean, if you watched the meeting, they were hesitant to go to that, yeah.
I did watch the meeting, I thought you did a good job.
Thank you.
Um, I didn't know you were, I mean, I was watching the meeting and there it came up, and I thought you did a good job. I do feel, though, the smell, the odor is, I'll say I find it to be very upsetting. If I lived near it, I'd be very upset about it, and I think I did mention to you guys once that in the heat of the summer one day, it came right up to where I live, and I thought I had a death pimple under my port, and really.
It's like a mile, isn't it?
I know, and I guess it has to do with the atmospheric conditions. I don't know.
Been your neighbors.
I don't know. No, it was not the neighbors.
A little payback.
It was, it's just very, very uncomfortable for the people that have to this. Their home is, you know, they, they don't work it.
Nobody is disagreeing with that, that's, nobody is.
So as long as we're going to find out at the end of June, what's going on, because I did read a comment in the paper from the owner of the facility, and he said, well, it really doesn't smell that bad, and I thought, well, um.
Kind of smoke it every night.
Not if you're in an industry.
It does, it does, it did to me, that's all I'm saying, and, um, no, it can be a very good thing for the town and the money, but I also think, David, that you have an interesting point as to the money that comes in and.
Well, that's.
You know, that's another issue.
Really not a planning board thing either, but that is, I am curious about it.
It isn't, but.
Citizen curiosity.
Citizen curiosity.
But I say, I, I hate to close the door on the future for something that happened in the past.
Oh, I do too, I do too. I don't, I'm not up to that, but I do feel there has to be, if it continues, a remedy to the situation.
Peter?
I had the impression that the retail places were producing a lot of money for the town, more, at least initially. I, my guess is, once you've got, you know, three to five of these retail shops per town, the fantastic profits that they were making in the beginning are gonna disappear through the market forces. And it's gonna be more like a liquor store with, you know, a small margin after a few years, that's my guess. But I didn't know that the, the grow places were contributing, so, I guess my feeling is, I'd, I'd like to know more about Dave's issue, and I'd like to ask that we get a report from Beth via, you know, from the finance people here in Town Hall about what the revenues have been from each of the places that is contributing marijuana revenue to the town, how much it is. Because I agree with Dave, I think if it's a lot of money, I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, but it's a different fact, you know, different set of facts. It's an economic development issue, it's a tax basis issue, it's a lot of things to consider, but that's one of them, to be sure. So I, I'm not ready to make a decision, but I would like to know what the revenues have been.
So, I mean, with a, a, say a grow facility, all of ours are indoors, we don't, basically, we don't permit outdoors, so you're gonna have the real estate tax on it.
Yeah.
And then I believe there's a percentage of sales, can you?
Even wholesale sales.
Yeah, wholesale sales.
Something three percent.
Three, you're exactly right. I believe three percent was. So there's that that we'd have to consider, and I believe that was a lot of our, you know, if we were, when we wrote the bylaw, we're gonna go in, we're gonna go in. I mean, that, even, that was one of the few instances Tom Winkham and I were almost on the same page.
I guess the question is, is the fact that you're, you got a certain number of licenses left. Greylock, for example, does that have a license now, or is that expired?
No, it's gone, but.
Those folks are gonna be coming in for another license, and we got neighborhoods around that place, and that place is even gonna be bigger than this one down here.
Could be.
So then the question's gonna be, how are we gonna protect those neighbors?
And also now that we've.
There's gotta be an engineered solution for this.
There is, and, and I believe it's more so the smell is generated from the manufacturing versus the grow.
Not the grow, because that's, that's absolutely.
That they can control, the manufacturing is the problem. Matt, you got anything to add?
Well, my thought, my thought was that I think knowing what we know now, that this, this problem has arose, we'll, we'll, I think we'll be able to use this situation to better advise us, or the board will be able to use this situation to see if they, maybe they solve the solution, or maybe we have to be tougher when people do come in for an application on this aspect of the design. I would think they're doing everything they can to, to get the right filters or engineering this to alleviate the smell, but who really knows if they'll be able to
I'm not sure. The, the owner stated that he didn't think it was too bad, so.
He did. That was in the Brooksville Eagle.
Well.
Well, it's not just, it's not just the select board member that is complaining, he's, he referenced that he's had neighbors call. I mean, I, I admit, I've, I've smelled it when I've driven down the road once or twice, but I, you know, I don't live next to it, so I don't have that. So I think we will, I think naturally we'll use this situation to bring it up for discussion during another applicant's business venture, but I don't know, I don't think it's an, I think the select board, what they were saying was, maybe we should look at a conversation, do we need ten more? We have six out there, do we need ten more? You know, do we cut that in half and make it five more, and, you know? I think that's, I, you know, I don't thi, I think it could be a worthwhile conversation, but I'm, I'm okay leaving it as is, because I do think it's an enforcement issue at this point, but that's it.
Or we could have a new rule that says that product manufacturer has to be really out in the boondocks, away from people. Rather than allowing it in the industrial zone where you get a high density, if it's not an engineering, it's an inherent problem that can't be solved except by. New Hampshire, for example, I mean, they had a problem in New Hampshire, I, I'm not familiar with that application, but they had an issue in New Hampshire, they solved it, and it sounds like everybody's happy, so.
We know that?
Just what I've read, so. But Pittsfield had a problem also, and I don't know it was ever solved. On Dalton.
Dalton, yeah, yeah, I don't think.
I think part of the problem is it's such a strange smell, it's very unlike anything else that people are accustomed to.
Like to say, to me, it smells like stunk gas.
Yeah.
That's not pleasant, not at all.
I mean, it smells better, I think, burning than growing.
Are you saying this personally, you're talking this?
You drive through Albany on certain streets and that's all you smell. That's all it is. In fact, we have an apartment complex behind our shop, and, and there's guys out there waking and baking every morning. It's just hilarious.
I had, I had another concern, is when, when we enforce, of course, it takes a, it does a time period from when the plants are new and they're ready to harvest. Suppose on our thirtieth day, he's got a full batch ready to be harvested, and we lock the door on.
I don't think we lock the door, do we?
Well, how can, you know, how can we let them go move on with their harvest if they can't control the smell after the thirty days?
Well, they get, they incur a, they incur a penalty per day.
Oh, there's a, I believe there's a cease and desist.
Well, what happens if you break the cease and desist?
Well, as I say, this is just more things that I think have to be considered, that's all. Not the muddy the water, but.
I think they're, I think they're at the beginning stages of this, trying to work with them to, to get it solved.
Any violation will be corrected within thirty days, if not corrected within the required time, all operations of the M, ME shall be suspended until violation is corrected.
You lose a million dollars with the plants.
I, I'd say let's work with them a little bit.
Yeah, well, okay.
Or, or we could be on the hook for that.
Exactly, that, that was my thought, exactly.
It's not our decision anymore.
No, that is.
We're talking about the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That's not a planning board thing, that's a special permit for selecting.
It is.
Right.
Yep, we get site plan, they get the special permit, and that probably should be even more emphasized in theirs, that there shall be no odor emitting.
So are we site planned, or are we site planned special permit?
Oh, we're site planned.
And then they have a special.
They have the special permit.
So we're site planned, approval, period. There's.
They get the site plan, special, special permit, yep, yep. They do. Moving on, we all set with this one?
Yeah.
So pretty, pretty much no action?
Do you, well, do you agree, you can ask for a financial report on the revenues from?
Yes, we're gonna do that, so we can have, um, I guess.
I would just, I would, I would just suggest that we keep an eye on what comes of this situation.
Agreed, but, and in the meantime, we'll have that information. If we have to revisit this zoning, we will, depending on the outcome of that of 102.
Yeah.
All good?
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
Moving on, any topic Cher could possibly in? Not, could not reasonably anticipate, um, no. We got a town meeting coming up, everyone. It's gonna be a new one, huh, Kathy? It'd be interesting. I, I really hope people do their homework before we get in there, so it's not trying to reinvent the wheel on this. That's, yeah.
The, it appears it's gonna be some sort of criticism, a strong criticism. Then judge, judging by baby town meeting, a motion to zero out or reduce the budget, the routine budget amount Are we contractually obligated to make that payment, or is, we are? So I think.
As, as we are with the other one they've, that we've reneged on.
So I think that we should have, plan to have somebody explain that to the town.
I would, I was gonna probably take the rotten tomatoes on this one.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's, but, I mean, this is just such one issue that
Yeah.
that Berkshire Regional has done. We get 40R with them, we're doing the master plan, they handle brownfields, they handle COVID vaccinations, they, public health, I mean, depends how far down in the weeds you wanna go with it. If you have a GE refrigerator, well, I guess you better throw out your refrigerator, because it says GE. I'm not sure. You know?
Yeah.
I.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask for a list of the things besides the one that it's sort of controversial that they have done.
Just what I, just what I named.
I know, I'm just asking if there's anything else that you.
I mean.
No, I know.
You've read the annual report of what it does for the county, the tip, all of our tip money for highways comes through that. Yeah.
It functions a little bit like a county government with other parts of the country.
Well, I like the statistics, I would use that.
Berkshire benchmarks, exactly.
Yeah, I do like that.
So, so our assessment, the amount in the budget is an assessment that somebody in Lee gets a letter saying you owe four thousand six hundred dollars, they put it in the budget, and maybe just pay the bill, is that the way it works? How is that amount calculated? It is a formula, probably, right?
It is, and it's set as a, yes, there is a formula, and there's a percentage increase every year, just like everything else. We just.
Inflationary increase.
Inflationary increase.
Is it based on population or something?
No, just, it's a generic, I think, you know, two and a half percent is what the finance committee.
Always recommends, oh, I see.
The, the assessment increase, yep, and, and it was just done, yeah.
I did, after I watched some meetings recently, I did call our town accountant, and last year, I believe, we gave twenty-nine thousand, if I remember this correctly, seven hundred thirty-two dollars, and the year before was seven thousand nine hundred, so it's, it's different.
It's for two, it's for different things. It's not our, our yearly.
Well, how much is our yearly thing, Buck?
It's only, I believe it's only like four thousand dollars or something.
Four thousand and something.
But last year, she told me we.
Because we're doing the master plan.
There's contracts.
Contracts.
No, I'm just saying that that's what was given last year.
Part of it, it was not because of our town obligation.
No, 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 I'm not.
We gave the town, them, we gave Berkshire Regional as the town of Lee that money because we were doing the master plan.
Okay, and now, no, go ahead.
And also, did, did you have your open space, was that last year also, Kathy, or? This year coming up, did you do anything with Berkshire Regional last year? Okay.
Well, anyways, it's in, it'd be good, maybe, I don't know, that up or whatever, just to let people know, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, really, but I did call and find out how much we did.
Then you should know, Peg.
Twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars.
For what programs?
The accountant said she'd call me back and let me know.
Okay.
And I, I'm not.
You don't know yet.
No, but we did give twenty-nine thousand, so I, I'm, I like to know the money that is being spent, that's all.
Well, that's what I'm, like I said, misinformation, you say, we, we gave Berkshire Regional twenty-nine thousand, well, that wasn't for our yearly assessment. That wasn't for the town of Lee to be a member of Berkshire Regional.
All right, so last, okay, well, not.
Which is very deceiving, what you're saying, and that happens a lot.
But Buck, okay, where did the twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars?
Into the corruption of the organization. Is that what you want?
No, I don't, I'm just shy.
I think he's saying it went, it was paid out for several different purposes. And they gave you, the town accountant gave you the total.
That's fine, but I think people need to know.
Well, and I'm saying.
And you're going to do it, so.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not gonna do it, but if you're gonna say that the town gave them that money, that money, you should also say what they gave it for.
That's fine, I worked, we worked with them, Buck, in numerous hours, Mark Malloy, I can't say enough about him, he came every meeting, got us all the stuff.
Remember who else was there too? Melissa Proventure.
She was very good as well.
Yes.
For the.
And you've seen that name around.
Yes, I have, yes. No, I have, I'm saying, they've done some really good things for us. And maybe people just need to know what those things were, and maybe, I, I just think, the more people are educated, whatever it is, they can make a good decision, that's all.
They also supported the bike trail committee.
Yes, they have. They've done a number of great things, I'm not opposed to it.
One of the other things that Mr. Josh Bloom brought up to the select board, when I watched the videotape of it, was a complaint about some handling of the public comment period during an executive session. And I think, you and I talked about it, and I think you weren't there, but if that comes up, will there be somebody there who can explain what happened, and I, I think that there is a complaint filed at Attorney General's office that has not been resolved yet.
There is.
I think we need to have somebody prepared to make some sort of statement about the fact that that review is pending. Would that be you?
I will do that. I, I don't see how that's relevant to.
Well, they'll make anything relevant that they wish.
And, but I'll say, there's executive committee, as long as I've been on it, there's never been. There's never been any public in the meeting, and, and they don't even have. I mean, yes, it's the executive committee. Micromanage each subcommittee. He just come other, each other, uh, and it's not even a subcommittee of the Berkshire Regional, it's a, it's a whole different entity. That all Berkshire Regional was doing was, um, was, uh, carrying the meetings.
Right, so he, I, I watched his complaint to the selectman and it included. That he was not allowed to speak, it included that the, the notice wasn't at specifically and specific enough. As to, there was forty five thousand dollars to be appropriated. And Mr. Bloom argued that it should be stated what the purpose is, but it, the notice failed in that respect, that it didn't say what it was for.
That was the Rest of River Committee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm not trying to make anybody uncomfortable, I'm just trying to make sure that we're prepared to. Answer what we know the objections are going to be, and I, frankly, I, I don't understand why. Um, even if the executive committee or the regional planning commission did violate some state law and public meetings. Why that ought to justify us breaching our agreement to fund the regional planning commission this year, but. Um, that, that, I think that argument is being made.
It is.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, you can, I mean, that argument's at the AG now, so.
Okay.
And public comment is not required. Through no over, under open meeting law, so everybody knows that.
Wasn't sure. We, we do it customarily here, but.
We do.
It's just custom.
It's not required, and, and also, Mr. Bloom, I'm sure he'll watch this. He kind of. Insinuates that he was being stonewalled and not giving the information. And when a complaint is filed, you have ten days to get. All requested information on a freedom of information, including recordings. Unless face it, people are busy.
So, so he was making freedom of information requests.
Requests.
And not allowing the people he requested it from, the time allowed by statute to respond to his request.
Correct. He, he felt it should have been faster. He was, and they, and they re, uh, they got all the information well within the timeline. That he needed it. There was no stonewalling. It's just people are busy and they don't, you know, sometimes, okay, you got ten days to do something, I'm. Yeah, I'll get it. I'm not gonna drop everything and get it right then, cause there's other, you know, pick a number.
That's why the law gives you a certain amount, number of days to respond.
Days.
Okay, well, thanks very much for, uh, allowing me to question you on that. I, I think, I feel like. We should be prepared for this discussion. I don't know if the board members individually wanna support or oppose the budget adjustment, but. I feel like we should explain, be prepared to explain the facts to the town.
Go ahead.
Well, I'll, I'll ask, will I be speaking as a Berkshire Regional member or a lead planning board member?
Well.
How about a citizen?
I mean, I, I think you are, you are a member of the lead planning board, you're speaking for yourself as a lead planning board member.
But I have the consensus.
Stating a position of the board as a whole. But you're stating facts that you know through your work at this board and at the regional plan, because you're a representative. So I think you are speaking in an official capacity, but not necessarily for the whole board, which has no position as of yet, right?
Do we want a position? That we support Berkshire Regional?
I, uh, I think I do. I think I do. I, I, I've heard. What I think are all the arguments.
I'll entertain that.
For, you know, to, to cut the budget. It doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't, it, it's like, to me, I don't, I don't know if this analogy holds water, but. Regional Planning Commission was in the room when the Rest of River Agreement was signed. It was signed by. Elected, appointed representatives from Sheffield, Great Barrington, Stockbridge, West Stockbridge and Lee, right?
Lennox.
Lennox.
Not West Stockbridge.
No.
Yeah, Lennox and Lee. So five, five towns signed that thing. And, um. Those same five towns with Lee voting no, voted recently to file an intervenor's brief. In support of that settlement. And people in Lee are unhappy about that decision. I, you know, I, I just don't see the agency of the regional planning commission. It's like. Saying, well, we, we're, we're gonna hire Conrad, but we aren't gonna hire him now for this job because. He was the guy driving the car that, in which Kennedy was shot, you know? Like he was there at the time, but he didn't, but he wasn't responsible for the event, as far as I know. The people who were responsible for the event were the other four towns that voted in the way that Lee didn't like.
And at that, but at that time it was, Lee also did sign on to it, so.
Initially, yeah, yeah, but the, the, the intervener brief.
Intervener brief, no.
Bob Jones voted no for me.
Right.
So I assume it was four to one, but I s- I still don't see the, the, uh, culpability of the regional plan. Planning people who are sitting there watching the vote, you know, as it happened. And, and maybe there's some Svengali-like control that they have over these people from Lennox and. And Stockbridge, but I don't think so, I don't see it. So. I'm sorry, but.
No, no, you go, you go.
Oh, it's just, it's scary. The Regional Planning Commission is a facilitator at these meetings.
Yeah.
Uh, they're also, uh, I'm an agent, but they're a consultant to all these towns or are part of this program. They are a benefit to Town of Lee. I mean, isn't, would that be the planning board's position? They assist. They're assisting us in the master plan, assisting us with the, uh, the open space plan.
Each separate contracts, and they're not attacking those contracts as far as I know. Yeah.
But the attack is against the Regional Planning Commission.
And, and against the, the routine, small piece of budget that's in the, in the town budget. Every year, there's, there's four to five thousand that's in the big, you know, the big long table of dollars.
So there's no contest about the, no larger contracts for the master plan in open space, is that?
There's criticism about the master plan. Um, but I don't think that there's an attempt to abrogate the contract. It's just, not that I know of.
Just a forty six hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
You thinking the planning board should have a position on this or?
Like one. I would like to know.
Which man think?
I can tell you what I think. I'd rather have a, a general consensus that the board, just say that board's general consensus. Is the best regional plan.
And to have a vote.
Than have a vote.
Okay.
That keeps us, uh, neutral but leaning one way.
Alright.
Peg hasn't spoken yet.
My, my, uh, my, uh. My thought was that, um, I agreed with both with Peter and Conrad and, and, and actually everybody, I guess. Um, is that they facilitated the meetings, they were just like a home base to help the towns organize. And they were just another, a, a resource, again, just in a different capacity. So I, I kinda think they get. The short end of the stick. That's my understanding. If I'm wrong. Um, then I'm wrong, but that was my total understanding of it. And I also agree with. The citizens and, um, anyone who's upset that the Rest of River, you know. Decided to enter into the amicus brief or, or whatever, but I don't think that was. Uh, Berkshire Regional's decision, they were just there. As an organizer. So I, I'm fine with. I'm fine with, um. Uh, going ahead and, and voting in favor of supporting Berkshire Regional.
In a consensus. Dave, you don't wanna, you don't wanna hear a motion? You'd rather just have it?
I would prefer, but that doesn't mean we can't take a vote.
Hey, you, you haven't said anything.
I'm disappointed that, um. If there, I understand the fact they're mediating, they're mediating. I guess I'm just disappointed. We can't have a better solution. To our problem, uh, with the upland disposable, whatever it's called. Thing, um, I don't really wanna get, I don't, I mean, there's been so much back and forth about this issue. I feel badly. Badly we're divided in this town over the issue and.
I don't think.
Maybe we're not divided.
Think we are, I don't, you know.
We're not divided.
I don't think anybody, I haven't talked to anybody that says, oh heck, I, yeah, I want that dump in town. No.
Well.
But they're.
No, I don't think anybody does want to dump it down.
I mean, and nobody.
Um, I don't know, I don't really.
Um.
This is about, this is about Berkshire Regional. This is not about. This is about, this is about Berkshire Regional's role. In our, do, so let's keep it separate. Berkshire Regional, do, do we think they signed the agreement? Do we think they instructed? The Rest of River to sign the agreement? Do we think they're part of, or did they facilitate meetings? And organize for the whole committee? Were they a resource used by the towns? To, to, to facilitate meetings? There's two separate things, and I'm saying. I don't believe, I believe they were just a facilitator. They didn't have any bearing on decision. If I'm wrong, if someone wants to. Tell me I'm wrong or point out that I'm wrong, I'm fine with that. I'll learn something new. But for me, everything that I've experienced in the eight years on the planning board is Berkshire Regional has been a valuable asset to our town and. Other towns, so I'm in favor of supporting Berkshire Regional if the board feels it, uh, necessary.
And.
But it, let's, let's talk about what we're talking about. We're talking about Berkshire Regional's role. So, so the question is, Peg, do you think Berkshire Regional's role was that they were involved in this decision? Or do you think they facilitated meetings?
Well, I wasn't there, so I can't speak.
Well, I, I think.
They did. I have great respect for Berkshire Regional Planning. They've done wonderful things in the town of Lee. Still concerned. Okay, at the second meeting that Josh was at, and I did watch that meeting, I got on Zoom and.
Which, which second?
The second meeting with Berkshire Planning.
Of the Rest of River? Or, or when he, when he photobombed?
No, no.
The.
There, there were two meetings. One, he was not allowed to speak. The second one. Uh, but.
Rest of River?
Yes. I've, um. Jones made two, two or three things. Could these people just speak? They were there.
He made motions.
He made motions, no one seconded the motion, that's correct.
None of the other towns seconded the motion?
That's correct, you're a hundred percent. Right.
So what did Berkshire Regional do?
They did nothing.
Except facilitated the meeting?
Why should they be punished?
I don't think they should. Well, how much would we be, I don't even know, I'll admit. How much are you going to take away from Berkshire Regional Planning? Are you gonna take a contract? From them, um, or is it just the four thousand dollars?
All we're asking, all we're asking if we wanna support the Berkshire Regional Board or a motion to support them, or, or do you wanna not do that? That's all.
I, I think the motion we'd be looking for, Matt, is, um, support the Town of Lee's financial commitment. To the Berkshire Regional Planning.
I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we. Vote to, uh. Support the Town of Lee's portion. Uh, to the regional planning board, is that good enough?
How about su- supporting the finance committee's recommended amount?
Yes, there you go.
Okay, you want me to repeat?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that the, the board, the planning board votes to approve.
Support.
The finance committee's recommendation. Uh, of the amount to be paid for Town, the Town of Lee's portion to Berkshire Regional Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Peter?
Hi.
Dave?
That motion I can agree to, yes.
Yes. Matt?
Hi.
Peg?
I'm going to abstain.
McDonald and I. How did I know that?
I know.
You gotta stand for something or you'll fall for anything, dear.
That's about it. That's okay.
And abstaining, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Will we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Will be it.
Okay, can I ask you how much money that is going to be? I'm sorry, we adjourned.
We're done.